Chairman Strobel, if you can call your board to order as well, we'll be ready to go.
Yes, thank you Chairman Carnes and for Lancaster County Board of Trustees, this meeting is hereby called to order, a joint meeting of county council and school board trustees.
Thank you everyone for being here. This is, in my memory, the first time that the councils have met together. I don't know about you, Charlene, you?
We've had lots before, before you.
So it's been awhile, so thank you everyone for being here. We've got, Mr. Luis is on his way. He was in traffic in Indianland last I heard, so he will be here when he gets here. Again, thank you everyone for being here. We're gonna have Mr. Strobel lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the dedication, if you could all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather today in service to our community, we pause to reflect on the shared purpose that brings us together. We, as county council members and school board trustees, are entrusted with the sacred responsibility of governing our community and shaping its future. Together, we oversee the structures that support our citizens' well-being and the educational systems where young minds grow, where knowledge is shared, and where the foundation of our communities tomorrow is built. May our deliberation be guided by wisdom and clarity. May God continue to give our, help us to make our decisions informed by compassion and foresight. May he also help us to listen deeply to one another and to those we serve. Let us remember the diverse needs of our citizens, our students, families, educators, staff, and all community members. Let us honor the unique perspectives each person brings to this table, knowing that through respectful collaboration between county council and school board, our best work emerges. As we turn to the business before us, may we approach each challenge as an opportunity to strengthen both our governance and our schools. May the council oversight of our county resources complement the board's educational vision. May we be mindful stewards of both our public resources and the trust placed in us by our constituents. Thank you to both, our county council members and our school board trustees, for your commitment to public service and to the well-being of all who called, who calls our county home. Let us begin our work, amen.
Have a motion to approve the agenda.
Sub move.
Motion for Mr. McGriff, second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor please say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Okay, we'll begin with item 5A, communication sharing.
Under communication sharing, Lancaster County School District will begin the discussion. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask the superintendent, Dr. Richard Fitzpatrick, for Lancaster County School District to speak through this slide deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In communication sharing, this is sharing with the school district and also the county council with our community. There is a local government email group where information is shared. Social media platforms, the county and the school district have social media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, and others. Websites, the county has a website and the school district have a website where we put important information and port dates and information that our community needs to know. Learn TV broadcast programs. The Learn TV that operates out of Lancaster High School here in the district has not only programmed and broadcast of the school, but also other groups and businesses in the, in the county and in our community. There is the county catch-up, and there will be some more information on the monthly update with the county catch-up shared on the next slide. The Lancaster County School District Board of Trustees meets monthly, and we have community forums where we go out into the community and talk with the community members and ask, and answer questions. There's a staff newsletter and the connector, a community newsletter with the county, and county council e-newsletter, special events and different outreach, including we partner on the mark, on the mock council, and that is when students come and participate with the county council, do a mock council so that they can learn about county governance. And there's also an inter-high school council with student leaders from every high school that meet with the superintendent quarterly. And last but not least, we partner on art and essay contests with the county for county government month.
Pardon us passing this back and forth, but we'll make sure the viewing public can hear in the microphone. What we wanted to also highlight is, we want to make sure with both bodies together, is that the community understands this isn't the only time the schools and county cooperate, talk, communicate. And so what Dr. Fitzpatrick just highlighted are some of the things that are ongoing. But I think for you as the board, governing board members, elected officials, I think you do want to take some comfort, that we do want to see how we can share and use our existing resources. How can we get out some of the county information on the school's website? How can we put some of the school's information on the county website? And make sure that we're doing the best that we can to engage the entire community, whether it's county business or whether it's school business. And then I think we'll talk in general about other towns or the municipalities too. How can we just do a better job of sharing our resources? Because they all serve the same constituents. And so we wanted to highlight just a few of these things that we have as resources. And so one of our new, oh, I do want to highlight the last ones that Dr. Fitzpatrick, where we do have April is National Counties Month. And so we've had a good program for the last at least two years where we do invite the student councils from the four high schools to come into this chamber and run a mock meeting. And one of the exercises we had them do last year, and we're gonna have them do this year, is- So we are gonna have that again here in April, and we'll invite the county council, and we invite the school board members to come see that as well, the Students in Action. And then the essay and art contest, again, is a way to celebrate National Counties Month and to engage the schools. So looking forward to those partnerships again to continue. But I think my message for anyone who's listening, of course, is your local government bodies do work well together, and I think this meeting is a highlight of that. So one of the things that we've done with the county, one of our new products, we're on episode, I think, number 18 or 19, we basically do a monthly video-
Before we, before we leave the communication sharing piece, I do want to bring to council and our community's attention the community forums that Dr. Fitzpatrick mentioned. I just want to provide those dates. And for the Lancaster area, the community forum with the district and the board will be March 25th, and that's from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We will be at the Lancaster Multipurpose Building. Again, that's on March 25th. Then for the Kershaw area, we will be meeting at the Andrew Jackson Multipurpose Building on April 1st, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And then the Indianland area will be April 17th at Indianland Middle School. So those are the community forums we have coming forward. We also completed a community forum in the Beaufort area on March 4th. And we want to invite the community out to participate in these community forums, and we will also be recognizing many of our students who are going to be receiving the board of trustees awards for state excellence, either with scholars bowls or with athletic events. So we're excited about these community forums that are forthcoming in our communities. One of the other things, if I may, Mr. Marstall and Chairman Carnes, is, I think it's important for the community to know that outside of these meetings, there are a lot of conversations occurring. That individual board meetings are meeting with individual school board members, and that in addition to that, the superintendent and the chairman, Mr. Carnes, and Mr. Marstall, and I are also meeting individually just to make sure we're staying in tune with what's happening, not only with different projects, but looking at the bigger picture for county council. And out of those meetings born this meeting. So I'm really excited about us coming together and doing this, and letting the public see that we're actually communicating with each other, and that is important.
We have, we've talked about some opportunities that we could collaborate together using our different social media posts. I think as districts, we each reach out into the community, but we may not all be reaching out to the same audience. And if we can expand the audience for both county council and for the school district board to be able to reach additional people, I think that's only a plus for the, for the county and for our citizens, because people that are informed make better decisions, and people that are finding out stuff and engaged also are, are more supportive of the activities, or at least are able to participate in the feedback on, on what's going on in, in both the school district and for county council.
Dr. Fitzpatrick, if you will lead us off in the county school collaborations slide.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will talk about the collaborations, and, Mr. Chair, you mentioned one already that I was gonna mention also with that monthly meeting between myself, Mr. Marstall, yourself, and, and Mr. Carnes. Also, in addition to what's on this slide, our finance department has met with the finance department here. We have faith-based community partnerships where we meet with leaders of the faith-based community and the county had representatives there also, so that we can see how we all can work together to do what's best for our community. The county and the schools do sports and esports in the Rocket League. Was one opportunity that developed from a meeting with the Parks and Recreation. We talked to county Parks and Recreation. We talked about the ages of young people, and those who were 13 and above, they really didn't have a lot with the county rec league, and so, or some of them weren't involved in activities in the school. So we partnered to offer esports and the Rocket League. We partnered with USCL in order to offer that to those students. Also, the Special Olympics is always a partnership between the school district and the county. And we do that at one of the county's parks. Youth and teen engagement, seasonal jobs and internship resources where young people have an opportunity to work. Volunteer cleanups with our, our sports teams. We have joint meetings between Parks and Recreation and Communications Directors meet also. And the Parks and Recs and our athletic directors met a couple of times in the spring just to talk about how we could share facilities, things-
It's fine. Things that we can do better, to work together. And so we met and a couple of things. One of the things that was shared is that with the Edbury Elementary School parking lot, when there are activities with the county Parks and Recs at that playground, underside of the school, that parking lot would be one that they could utilize. The Lancaster County School District wants perpetuity. It's used all the time, all for the community, and we are seeking ways to work with and collaborate to serve our students and to serve the entire community. I know I see the school office and the Mr. McCray back there. They have been there a couple of times to meet with us, to talk about Parks and Recs and everything they do and the things that we're currently doing, and what we can do better together.
I get off, Fitzpatrick. I, I think that as community stewards of the facilities and the things that we're given, we really all need to work together for the betterment of our community. And that, that entails, to me, getting together and talking about ways that we can share facilities, because we've all sat at the dais and heard the reports about our sports teams that are at complete capacity, and we don't have any, I mean, we've got waiting lists for just about every sport now. And if we can expand those programs by utilizing facilities that the school district has, and if we have things that they could use, I think it just is a win-win for the citizens of Lancaster County. You know, all of y'all are welcome to participate in the conversation here. Don't, don't let us, either one's hogging all the words here, so.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Carnes. I had, of course, some questions lined up while I was listening. So just as curious, have any of the facilities been made available for county programs? Has anything actually happened out of the conversations that we've been having?
The parking lot is one example, but as far as county things that I do, I'm not sure that that's happened. But the conversation is, how can we make it?
We sit in front of them, having space available for all of the students, the resurfaces thing to live around. I think we've had the conversation around, how can we make it better for our children and make sure that if the schools are accessible and they need that space, that we can work some sort of partnership out. So I think that's the direction that we want to go in.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You know, I've been over here a long time, and we've had the conversations with schools, school district. But we've had, we had COVID, which, you know, between that and the, the school shootings, I think there was a lot of security concerns, and then the COVID, you know, that, that pretty much killed anything from any kind of cooperation. I mean, you've had obstacles, and then, you know, the, the, there's the cost of renting those facilities, what, you know, it's a, could, can get pretty significant when they have to furnish security, and they want, they have to make sure that their, you know, their teams aren't using them, and there's not access to the other parts of schools. So there, there's a lot of complicated moving parts to this, but it's something that really needs to happen because we, we know, y'all know what it costs to create new facilities, and I would really like-
Excuse me, the Recreation Department to, to be able to work with the school district and, and utilize all our facilities, because, you know, they, they belong to the taxpayers.
Wait a minute, hold on. Let's get the mic. So, because we've got folks watching this in the audience, so I want to make sure that as we're speaking, we get the mics around to the board members and council members who are speaking. So council member Neil?
Yeah, it would, it would make it so much easier for everybody in here if we could just work together, because you got people signing up to play, and you get a call, hey, we can't, we can't, we booked. We can't play, and Little Johnny or Suzie don't get to play. And, I mean, it's frustrating to the parents that they sign up and they, and the teams are booked, because they don't have the field space or coaches or whatever. But it would be, be great if we could all get together and make that happen.
Board member Johnson, can we get the mic over there?
Do we, Mr. Marstall, do we have access to a second mic that we can put on this end of the table? Okay.
Thank you. So to the, to the end of all of this discussion that's just happened, everybody here is saying, I'm hearing everybody saying, this is a great thing, let's do it. Do we need to put together a joint committee or appoint people right now, today, in charge of investigating this and move forward?
Well, I, I don't, I think we have the right people in place that have, if I may, Councilman Carnes, at least from the school district, and I'm looking at the superintendent to confirm this, but the Park and Recs folks are meeting with our facility maintenance folks. Those conversations are occurring. I think it's, the, one of the obstacles, and I appreciate Councilman Steve Harper for talking about COVID security as obstacles, but also scheduling is a huge obstacle for us as well. When, when, when we talk about Park and Recs having a waiting list and it's full, we have just 600 athletes at Indianland High School alone. That's not counting the middle school and other places. And so scheduling just the school activities, not just the athletic activities, but then those organizations that are supporting the school as well, that are using those facility, makes it a lot more challenging for us. But what we are agreeing to today is to look at those schedules and make the commitment where we can. And, and I think the school board and the district is open to that. Dr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, sir. And, and what I would like to do is to ask if, with the county, there are models out there with districts and counties that share facilities and, and do this very well. And so I'll be willing for us to get together and go visit a county that works with their school districts and use the facilities, or we can just sit down and meet with them. It can be in person, on Zoom, but I can definitely research some of those counties. I'm aware of a couple, and have some relationships, and I'm sure they would meet with us.
You know, what I would like to see is, if this is a staff, oh, sorry.
This is a staff responsibility, so what I'm seeing is that our staff on the county side and the staff on the school district side get together, visit whichever facilities you need to, bring it back to us as a council and a board to discuss what's, what we can and cannot do. I just don't want us to talk this thing to death. Some things may work, and some things may not work. It may be as, not as much as we would like, but we've got to find a way to accommodate these kids within our county.
Are there any other comments, Mr. Marstall?
Actually, I was gonna continue on the collaboration conversation. We have another slide, but one thing that was highlighted on this one is the faith-based community partnerships where the schools and our Parks and Recreation staff have met with, I think, roughly 70 faith-based leaders within the last month. And that is also a conversation about, is there faith-based space we can use for Parks and Rec programs and other things? So trying to engage the community. We'll see if we can get some legs around that as well, but clearly we'll work together on our facilities. On the next slide, I wanted to highlight, again, we talked about, can we use information materials at different meeting presentations with you all out and about and doing different district meetings, whatever it may be, so we can share information. And then certainly our websites, the county's updating our website and moving to a new host. So we're gonna be changing our look, and we're gonna have some more capabilities on our website for banner scrolls and different things, so ways that we can communicate through that. Plus, in the general, community partner marketing campaigns, as we talked about, social media posts clearly to help share. But one of the things also with the Parks and Recreation is about our after-school program. So we're connected with the school system through there and having some collaboration and coordination. But as we just highlighted, it really is a lot of the staff members who are leading this collaboration have been. So I actually want to recognize our staff members. First, we have Stephanie Snowden, who's our deputy county administrator from the county side, to make sure the school members get to know her. But also, we have Sabrina Harris, who's our CFO. And I know her and Ms. Norris from the school side have been working very well together, and tracking impact fee collections, which will be one of your conversations. We do have Gary Baker over here from our communications team. He's the one behind our county catch-up, our video productions and things. But we also do have Chris Cloud in here as our Parks and Recreation Director, and Mr. Jason McCray, our deputy director. So you can put some names and faces to our side, and I'll have the superintendent introduce his team. But that really is kind of what we wanted to highlight for the collaboration. But the last one I wanted to highlight before we do the school introductions is we have the regional park. If you'll advance that for me. Oh, Ms. Lauren Hill? Lauren Hill's our deputy clerk to the council, so she's also integral to working with your team. On the next slide, we have the regional park we wanted to highlight. Lauren, can you advance that for me? You've heard about this, hopefully, the Roseland off of the Roseland Parkway area off of 521. We wanted to highlight this is because, we talk about school field trips and different things coming down. This might be a good opportunity. Certainly, we have historical commission and historical markers. There's a lot of county parks and different things that certainly we'd love to encourage school kids that maybe have field trips to those. But one of the things is when you have big events, or we're thinking some big baseball games or something, the regional park might be an opportunity for some of your teams to host. But also, we have, this is 64 acres, and we're looking at some others and trails. It could be a site for cross-country tournaments. And so there's been a conversation that we have to fit that into the park plan, but that is something also on the horizon, that we could have a pretty strong facility for cross-country in the future. So we're gonna highlight, and then the next one slide, clearly we're gonna have a robust splash pad, and so that'll be an opportunity for certainly youth to enjoy in the spring and summertime. So we just wanted to highlight that for the school and for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Marstall. And I want to recognize the school, the school employees that are here on, on the leadership team. Start off with David Small, who is Director of Facilities and Maintenance. We have Jutana Norris, who is the CFO. We have Rodney Graves, who is the Director of Employee and Community Relations. And we have Norris Williams, Dr. Norris Williams, who is Deputy Superintendent. And also, people sitting to my left, have Michelle Craig in the Communications Department, and Miranda Tillman, who is the Secretary for the Superintendent and Board Liaison.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on now to item 5C, community referendum planning. We, we all are, we both experienced a little loss this year, and we, we think that we need to plan better for it. And I, I think that we all are starting to move in that direction. Mr. Marstall, would you like to begin the discussion?
Thank you, and thank you for the introduction. And again, to our audience, to staff, and to the community who's watching. The school board-
Uh, the school board uh met back in February uh during our planning uh session. And there we talked about uh the next steps for a new school bond referendum. Out of that planning session, the board voted to establish a citizen review committee, which will be acronym CRC. Uh, the citizen review committee will be comprised of forty-five Lancaster residents. Uh, thirty-five members will be appointed by each of the school board members, five per board member, and then ten members will be appointed by the superintendent. Uh, again, uh, the members of this CRC must be Lancaster County residents and uh we're looking for a balanced uh committee, uh, one that reflects the diverse demographics of the Lancaster County. Next slide. Uh, tentative timelines associated with uh the work that the CRC will be doing is uh shown on 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 the screen there. I don't want to go through each one of these, I just want to hit some highlights. Um, and that is um they will be visiting the schools, all twenty-six schools in the county. Um, and so that schedule is somewhere between May to September. Uh, the board had conversations, a lot of the schedule that you see before you, some things will be occurring concurrently or or there'll be some overlap uh so that they not only get to see the facility, but in many cases, they will actually see those facilities and operations with students and administrators uh actually carrying on their day-to-day uh duties. Uh, the other item that I want to highlight is we're looking for final recommendations to the school board around November, December. Uh, and the school board has voted on a tentative, and let me repeat again tentative, I want to underscore and emphasize the word tentative, uh, date for a bond referendum to occur in March or or April of twenty-six. Next slide. Uh, the CRC governance, the the board um had some uh very good discussion Tuesday night uh and and Tuesday morning, okay? Uh, so um on on the governance of this board and so, I mean, of this citizen-driven committee. So uh they came up with some very good recommendations for the requirements that each individual will be asked to meet, what the ground rules of the uh committee would be, uh, what the decision-making process will look like and communication protocols. Uh, just to touch a bit, when we talk about requirements, we're asking those individuals who are agreeing to serve and volunteering on this committee to commit to the full term of the committee, uh, to uh not miss more than two consecutive meetings, um, review all the information related to the bond, uh, to come prepared to each of those meetings, uh, participate in at least one community forum. Those are just some of the uh nine requirements that they identified. Then under the ground rules, um, we had about eleven ground rules, which included respect the opinions and perspective of other community uh committee members. One person speaks at a time, uh, no interrupting, no dominating the meeting. Um, we asked them to focus on the um needs of students and educational outcomes, uh, and to uh try to start and end the meeting on time. Don't follow Melvin's example. Um, and we also are asking them to leave any personal agendas and politics outside the committee room. Again, those are just a few of the ground rules that we're looking for associated with the committee. In the decision-making process, um, a simple majority is required for the procedural matters, but we consensually agree that a two-thirds majority is required for recommendations. Uh, all members will have equal voting rights and um uh again, final recommendations must include majority and minority viewpoints. And then for communication protocols, um, regular updates to the school board, uh transparent communication to the community, we, all of their meetings should be open and advertised uh so that the community can participate and know what's going on. And all men and all meeting minutes will be publicly available. So again, those are just some of the things that we agreed to as governance for the CRC. Next slide. Um, the, catch up with you. On this slide, um, again, uh, we we anticipate monthly meetings, uh, subcommittees may be set up by the CRC, this is this is things that the committee itself will do. We talked about the school visits and uh we talked a little bit about public input, uh, sessions will be scheduled. So those are important things that we want to see happen with this committee. Uh, next slide. When we talk about what that report must include, so the report from this committee, and remember, this is a lot of work we're asking of our volunteers, and again, this is a large group of folks, but the board is looking for a prior to a a prioritized list of what the capital needs are for Lancaster County. Um, and in addition to that, they will be providing those cost estimates, what is the tax implications for our citizens? And we'll be talking about a schedule and uh what are some of some alternative funding mechan- funding mechanisms that they may have in mind? Uh, we have to also look at justifying, what is the educational justification for each of these recommendations? Uh, what are some of the long-term maintenance and care of the facilities that we've got a budget for? And the the part that is um important to all of us is that all of the recommendations to report must not only include what the majority viewpoints are, but we're also looking to understand what the minority viewpoints were. And again, I I stress that this is recommendations coming to the board. This committee will not make the decision, they're more of an advisory committee. This board will make the final decision. Next slide, yes? Back it up. Yes, sir, certainly.
I I see one bullet point up there I disagree with.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the consideration of alternative funding mechanisms, that is something I believe that you your board should be working on now. And that uh the uh what you get from the public, uh, they they need to, I I think they need to be concentrating on more of what the actual needs are. But I I would recommend uh that that I would recommend that if it was counsel, that we immediately start looking at some other funding sources, especially for, I I don't know the exact needs, but I do know there is needs for a school, a grammar school in the Panhandle.
Yes, sir.
Two years ago. So that's just, that's just my two cents.
No, 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 Council Harper, I I want to thank you for that comment. Uh, and and I want folks to know, I didn't pay him to make that comment. That leads right into, uh, it's important for folks to know that while the board certainly is putting together this citizen review committee, CRC, the board is continuing to work in other areas. Um, one of the areas that we are constantly working with is Dr. Fitzpatrick and our CFO, Jatana Norris, who's sitting in the audience. We're constantly looking at uh how we are funding current operations and making those capital improvements in our uh five-year plan. But we're also looking long range at what are the things we need to do to start preparing for a school bond and what information we are going to need to share with the citizens. Uh, the 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 third bullet that talks about tax impacts analysis and consideration of alternative funding mechanisms will actually be coming from the district. We will be providing resources to this citizen review committee to support the work that they're doing. Uh, so they'll have uh staffing support from the district as well as uh some consultants uh who are architectures and uh general contractors will be supporting with the cost analysis. So I I appreciate you for bringing that up. Uh, but again, there's a lot of work and planning that is already starting to support this committee. Uh, again, I'm excited about forty-five people being a part of it because we want it, the more people we get involved, the better we hope the product will be. I will tell you, uh, the board has talked a a lot about a balanced approach, so we're not only looking for uh folks who are in favor of the previous bond, but we're also putting folks who were opposed to the previous bond on this committee. Uh, the goal is not to transform or change folks, but to make sure folks are well informed on the needs of this district. And so that's what we're hoping to accomplish with this committee.
I pulled away on my comments to make sure that you are.
Yes, ma'am.
You completed everything.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I have.
Are you at the end?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'm at the end of, yes, ma'am. We're at the end of the school bond.
You know, planning is good, communication is good, but we also got to understand perception is also necessary because people are perceiving what they see. May not be true, but the truth is what they perceive. And I don't know whether you have reviewed some of the, I don't know whether I should call them mistakes or things that you didn't do for the for your past referendum. I don't know whether you reviewed some of that to see where did we go wrong, what we should have done, and how do we move forward from that? But, you know, we've talked in the community, I know in my area, we've talked very much about why the transportation uh referendum passed and also why the school board. Well, from my community and from the people I talked to, they said it was too large, too soon, not enough planning and involvement, the majority of the funds was going to Indianland. So whatever you do, planning forward, and I know you say you're going to look at the whole entire community, but we know the needs are in the Indianland area. We all know that, we know that we need an elementary school in the Indianland area. My recommendation is do not make that bond so big because folks will not pass it. If it's too big, you need to take pieces at a time. Uh, you had a bond two years about?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. People are still trying to trying to uh understand that. You went over budgeting in some areas, was a lot of negative talk around there. So you've got to give people time to sort that. And then this bond, the past bond, didn't pass, and you're coming back. People are not quite ready, from what my folks tell me. So when you do a bond, you want it to pass. You don't want to put all that time and effort and it doesn't pass. So I think, in my opinion, you know, I have some opinions. In my opinion, I think you need to wait if you really want it to pass. And I've been in this community a long time and um I hear my people and I'm just telling you what the folks I talked to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGriff, thank you for that that feedback, greatly appreciate it. Any others?
From the county side, as we talked about community referendums, um, if people remember, last November, we had a county transportation sales tax referendum. It was for four hundred and five million dollars, over fifteen years. It would have taken the local sales tax up a one full percent to fund that. And it had a whole list of projects that had over a hundred and twenty-five road projects, a major widening of five twenty-one and a lot of road work in the different municipalities. And so that did not pass. And so the community group has been looking at that for us for the last go-around and now is called the County Transportation Committee, CTC. They're appointed by the county council. Um, that committee and some of the feedback from county council is they are going to meet uh next week, March twenty-seventh, to have a look again at some of the road projects and come up with another proposal for county council to consider. But based upon feedback, they're looking at a smaller package, maybe in the range of two hundred and fifty million and for a shorter timeframe, maybe ten years. Um, and so they will do their work basically over the next month, kind of looking at some of the existing um roads that they still think are needed, um, based upon growth pressure, congestion, but also getting ahead in some other areas. Um, so we'll let them do their work. They should have a recommendation to county council that we can bring forward at the end of April, first of May, for county council's consideration. And then county council consider if they want to put that package on the November twenty twenty-five general election. So that's kind of where we are in re looking at the transportation sales tax.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so on the proposed um county transportation bond referendum, it will list all of the roads that you are looking to uh enhance or improve.
See, we haven't done the full structure. The structure of the transportation sales tax is different than the capital project sales tax and different than school bonds, they all have different parameters. I think council has said part of the feedback is how can we have more information on the ballot question? Um, so we will work with that with language on how we meet the parameters of the state statute and how we can have as much information, but yet have the understanding, the only unique thing about the transportation sales tax is it's hard to prioritize and then move on. If you're doing a five twenty-one widening, that's a ten-year project. So a lot of the projects have to move simultaneously, so we have to figure out how we can communicate better on that when you have multiple projects underway. You do have a finite timeframe if it's going to be ten years or whatever. And so just trying to figure out how you communicate a prioritization, but also have the legislative flexibility to move several projects at one time.
Thank you, I have the same concerns Ms. McGriff had about the school bond, that that if we immediately turn around one year later and send it back to the public, that we 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 could get turned down. And I I don't know if we have enough time to really research this and put together a project that will be more precise and uh to to the projects that would actually go on there to 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 be, you know, roads upgraded or or paved. So that's, I I've 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 I have an issue with immediately turning around after the public has told me no, and then one year later saying, here it is.
Hearing both of you, thank you very much for that feedback because it's critical. But what I'm really truly hearing from community members that I've talked to across the county is we did less than stellar communicating the needs, communicating what we had in mind, communicating how it was going to benefit the citizens, the payers of the bill of both of these issues. And I think both of us have recognized that, both bodies have recognized that and are putting plans in place right now to improve that communication, not of what we're going to do, but the communication of what the needs are right now. And I think that will make a huge impact with our citizens because we'll get those questions much sooner to be able to make sure that we take those into consideration.
I'd say, yeah, so as it's structured now, there would not be a process going forward where both bodies would be going to the voters at the same time.
I would just like to make a clarification and just understand, conversations that I've had and conversations that other folks have had may not necessarily be aligned. There are some folks who may not have understood things, but the vast majority of folks that I've spoken to did understand, they just didn't like it. So to Mr. Harper's and Ms. McGriff's earlier points, I think we need to go back and do a clear understanding and listen to the community of what they want and what they need and then do a prioritization based off of that. And I think the suggestion of doing smaller, that's easier to digest, it builds trust within the community that we are doing exactly what we asked you for and what you approved. And that is going to be the critical element. I I don't want to continue to focus on the communication because that gives a perception that people just didn't understand, and I think a lot of people understood. that people just didn't understand, and I think a lot of people understood.
Still, I mean, Councilman Graham, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Yeah, I think the, the challenge for both bodies is that there's, there's, I won't even, I don't know if I should say immediate needs. There are needs that are behind, we're behind the eight ball on the, on the schools in Indian Land. I mean, I think that's, I don't think anybody disputes that, and especially when we talk about the roads in Indian Land and specifically 521 and other ones, we're already behind on that. So it's trying to figure out how do you responsibly catch up and make sure that we stay ahead, especially as growth and things happen down 521. So it's, 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 it's not super straightforward or we'd already been solved it, right? But one thing that I'm trying to think about this, because I think, and, and as you think, especially about the transportation, is that it's not a, I think it's a little bit of, you want to be transparent and you want to lay down what you want, what you're going to do to build that trust with our citizens and rebuild that trust with our citizens that you can effectively manage these or some monies in these projects. But I think on the transportation, if we think of it as specifically this road and this road and this road and this road and this road, I, I think comprehensively, it needs to be, this is how we're funding roads in Lancaster County. I mean, it has to be down that path because there really are very limited funding options. And the same thing with schools, there are very limited funding options for building new schools as they come available. And as we have 15,000 houses in Edgewater with more coming, and certainly a lot of houses already approved around the city of Lancaster, I, I think I would encourage both bodies to think about a, this is how we're funding these things moving forward and not just, here's a transportation tax for seven years or 10 years, and then next thing you know, when that thing expires, you're going through the same thing. I mean, York County has done a good job of pennies for progress and it's, it keeps reoccurring because citizens in that county understands that's how they fund roads comprehensively, not just this road and that road and then this road. So that's my two cents on that. Two cent? Okay, half a, oh yeah, 1%.
I, I think as we go forward, that honest communication, feedback from the public, and also the education part to the public. I saw a lot of comments after the transportation tax of that, you know, the county has lots of money to pay for roads and, you know, I think that's the education part is for people to understand how these things are funded and how they're paid for in the same way with the school district, you know, that you have to, we have to be upfront and honest and say, you know, as, as Councilman Graham was saying, that this is the way it gets done. This is the only way it gets done. There's not a mechanism to be able to do it any other way.
Also, the cost to do these roads. I mean, folks don't understand how much it costs to do a mile and what it takes with all the extra stuff around it. So I think when we're educating people, we need to give them the details and not just we're going to do this road for how many million, but it takes, what's the, what's the going rate per mile now, Dennis? $6,800,000 to do a mile. So, yeah, yeah. So they need to understand the cost and why it's so important that they understand what it takes to, to build a highway.
And what, and what, I know council has heard me say this too, is that you have, you also have to put in the resources within, within staff to transition, to be able to hand, to, to look at the roads comprehensively. And the same thing I would say from the school side is that making sure that you understand how to do multiple schools as you, as you fund them through the, because it's not something you do every day as a, as school. You're educating, you're, you're doing those things. You're not necessarily building schools. So what, what resources do you need? What, what information, what technical skills are needed to make sure that you can successfully use those funds in an efficient manner? I think that's one of the things that Ms. McGriff talked about is making sure that they're efficiently using funds as it's going through the process. That goes a long way.
One of the things that, that we really got to consider with 521 widening and stuff is the utilities and stuff, you know, that sort of gets overlooked in our cost. I've talked to some of the utility people on that last referendum, and, and they're saying, you know, we don't have the money to move these utilities. I hope that y'all gonna get enough money to pay us to move them. So, and it's going to cost a lot of money to move power and gas and water and stuff. So that, that's got to be considered in with that. So that will cost a lot of overruns if we're not careful. So we need to be, make sure when the planning is done, that that is took into consideration. Talk to the utilities and say, how much is it going to be to move this stuff? And that way we'll have a better idea of a cost.
Yeah, that, that is one thing that, as serving on RFATs, that all the projects RFATs does is that's, the state requires or, years ago, the utilities had to pay to move their own stuff. Now that's all built into the project as part of the state law now that the, that, you know, when you're considering a road program, that's part of the budget.
As I think in parallel, from a school perspective and viewpoint, and again, I want to pause for a moment and just give recognition to Councilwoman McGriff and to Councilman Carnes, who both served on the school board. We, we thank you for your service there. And so you, you, you kind of understand what we're doing and what we're going through. So we certainly value your feedback as well as everyone around the table. One of the things that I've asked folks to keep in mind is as we are looking at how we find seats for the students who are coming into the Panhandle and into Lancaster, but particularly right now in the Panhandle, we're having to add mobile classrooms. Those mobile classrooms are costing us about a million dollars a pop now. And is that about right? I'm looking at our facility maintenance and our CFO back there. And so I say that because when, when folks think about mobile classrooms, they're thinking back to what the cost was 10 years ago or so. So we, so again, with the finite pipe of, pot of money, we're trying to work through that issue as well. So if you've got a million dollars there, I think it's worth noting as well that for the Panhandle area, we have 53 mobile classrooms or trailers. That's the largest we have in any of our areas. And so I, I just want to highlight that when we talk about what the needs are. Now, the school board recognizes that we are still reacting to growth in the Panhandle. Our goal is to get ahead of growth as it is sprawling towards Lancaster and into Kershaw. So I appreciate the comment from Councilman Graham as we talk about helping and educate, helping our citizens understand and educating our citizens to understand that as growth continues, that there will be other bonds that will come out. I think folks tend to believe that if you have one bond, that it, it's good for 20 years. And that's, and when you're in a high-growth area, that just doesn't happen that way. When we look at what the number of bonds that has occurred in Fort Mill and in Charleston County, where they, they have high growth, and in Greenville, the, the bonds are occurring every six years or so. So I, but I do agree that it needs to be, back to Councilwoman McGriff's point, it needs to be in smaller bites so that the, our citizens are able to understand it and, and look at where those needs are. And that's the purpose of this Citizens Review Committee, is to help us look at exactly what are those needs. I want to remind everyone as well is that when this last bond came out, our board did not go into a closet and say, here's the needs, and came out with cost. There was a, there was a citizen committee, facility needs committee, that helped direct and pull those needs together then as well, and helped identify what those needs were. And there were several surveys and community forums in which we gathered input on that last bond. And so was it, was it enough communication? No. Could we have done a better job? Yes. But I want folks to understand that the, the board did not do this in a vacuum. We, we attempted to try to get input, and we're doing things differently. We're following the model of another school district who had two bonds, that one in three years. One was exceeded 400 million, close to 500 million, and the second bond was 380 something million. So in the, and within a five-year period, they had success in accomplishing about a $700 million bond. Not that that's what Lancaster needs to do and what Lancaster can do, but we certainly want folks to understand that the board is, is reaching out to folks. We're listening. If the Citizens Review Committee comes back and says, hey, we need to push this bond out for an extended period of time, we're going to listen to what that committee advises us. So again, I appreciate all the comments, and I don't want folks to feel that the school board, current board, is just trying to make those decisions without gaining input from the community.
I've got another comment. Now, when, when you're talking about Lancaster, you're talking about a unique situation. You're talking about the Panhandle, Greater Lancaster, and the Kershaw East Ring area. I don't know what the districts, the two districts that you looked at, but please understand that we are countywide districts. Some of those other counties have districts, districts within their county. So when you're dealing with Indian Land, they may agree on whatever you're doing, but you got to get the whole overall county involved because it's totally different even with the, the socio-economical part of it, the citizens, the culture, all of that is different. So you've got to change the mindset of the entire county. And when you talk about putting more in Indian Land, even though we may know you need more, you got to convince the rest of the county that, unless you can get Indian Land to, enough votes in Indian Land to make it happen. But we found out that, that's not going to happen. So you got to wrap your arms around and, and get the entire county so they can understand the needs of that, you know? And I, I'm going to say it again, too soon will fail. Because I've been through enough of them to understand, too soon will fail.
And again, we appreciate that. And my closing comments on that is you're absolutely right. We understand that we have four communities actually within Lancaster, and if you divide the Greater Lancaster and that Buford into that. And we are very fortunate to have, like county council representatives from each of those communities who are voicing and advocating for those communities and ensuring that as we go through this process, that their voices are heard. And one of the things is, I was very active on the 2016 bond referendum, which we were successful with, and you're absolutely right, Councilwoman McGriff, we gave something to every community in 2016. Everything from the multipurpose buildings to new schools in the Panhandle area. We even put a new face on Lancaster High School. So you're, you're right in the fact that every community needs to feel that they're getting something because we are a countywide school district and not a, four separate school districts.
Thank you, everyone, for your input.
After just listening to what I've heard, you know, I know that we shouldn't have a bond as closely, closely toward county. It should be separate. And I know that if we move too fast, there's still a perception out there that people, people do understand, and there are some people that don't understand, and there's some people that's just frustrated, you know? So I'm under the opinion that we need a bond, we all know that we need a bond, to build some new schools and keep up with growth, not only in Indian Land, but in Lancaster, Kershaw, and Buford. But in order to do that, we definitely got to have the entire community's buy-in, you know? We can't have one side versus another side versus another side. It got to be everybody buying in together. And if we get the community involved where they lead this, they have more input than, you know, just the board telling them this, that, and the other, but they need to be able to come to the table and put their own ideas and strategies in place, and we work together, partnership, you know, because it can't just be a body that's going to dictate to the community when I need the community to buy in. So we all got to work together, you know? And I'm grateful for county council, you know, for the vision that you guys have to continue to build, get roads and, and different things that we need in the county, throughout the county, and looking at how we need the schools to go along with the growth that we have, you know? So it's, it's ongoing situation that we all got to work together to make it happen so that our community and our students can have better educational system. But, you know, you know, we, we thinking outside of the box, we, we were thinking about next year, but I've heard some council members say that that may be too quick, you know? So, and, and what we need to do is just be able to listen and hear comments and, and process them and put them in the right place so that we can grow from each other's ideas and comments and understandings. Because the last thing I want to do as a school board is to go into a bond with uncertainty, no buy-in, you know? So I just want to make sure that we have community buy-in, county council buy-in, and just be able to have some wholesome conversations that, that will benefit, you know, and not take it too serious if, if something's not going to work and you feel like it's not going to work, just say so. And if I receive that, or if I don't want to receive that, you know, I will receive that for, for the benefit of the whole community, you know? So I got to be outside of the box, thinking positive and trying to do some positive things. But if you don't have no vision and you don't listen to nobody, then we'll be stuck again. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? A couple of things you got to remember, that the, the way that our citizens get information now is completely changed. Nothing against the news media, but Facebook and, and Instagram is where information comes from, whether it's right or wrong. And my big concern is we're talking with a group of 45, you're going, each one of you're going to have five people. Everybody's going to have their pet project. And I think that's one thing that killed this is because you put $800 million out here, oh, Andrew Jackson, we can build you a high school, Buford. There was a video online, oh, you got, we, we, we got to spend $20,000 on our $50,000 on a softball field. And we got to address our needs first and not our wants. And, and that's what, if you present a, too big a bond, you, if you get a group of vote no out there, you're dead and, dead on arrival. And I mean, I've just, you, you, you... So I mean, I've just uh, uh, you, 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 you really need to focus in the public needs to understand the true need. We have four thousand five hundred first through fifth graders or whatever in the Panhandle. We have, what, three elementary schools? We have fifty-two mobiles or whatever. Our number one need is we need this now. Or you have, think you have issue with the middle school, don't you? I mean, they, they, you've got to prioritize them and you, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to cut them back. And I think the county will support. I, I, you know, I would support if it, i- if the true needs were all in the Panhandle. Uh, I would support it, but I just, please, you know, don't make this into a beauty contest just to make some schools look better. Uh, you, you're gonna, you're gonna get turned down because the public's a, a lot smarter than we think they are sometimes. So they understand.
Attendance zones. And I know that's, that is such a negative conversation. Now, we know we've got, I don't know whether there's room south of five for, in schools. I'm, I'm not up on the enrollment in each one of the schools. Uh, and do we have capacity here below number five to accommodate any students? Uh, but anytime we talked about redoing the attendance zone, that was a no-no. Was it not, Brian? We didn't talk about that because parents didn't wanna hear it. Have y'all looked at anything like that about changing the attendance lines or zones? You may not wanna talk, we got newspaper over there.
Uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick, I, I will say uh, the attendance zones was feedback that we got both from Kershaw, Lancaster and Indian land. And when I talk about the attendance zones, let me, let me start with Kershaw and Lancaster. Uh, if you remember in the last bond, it was consolidation of schools there. And um, a lot of parents said no, just because we were looking at changing attendance zones in Kershaw and in Lancaster. That was a lot of feedback we got as well. And then when we indicated in many of our meetings that options under consideration, that could be a consideration by the board, is shifting students out of the Panhandle south where we have some capacity. We got a uproar there. And it, and so, you, you, so uh, Councilwoman McGriff, you're absolutely right. It is a very complex issue with not a simple solution. Um, and when you talk about attendance zones, it doesn't matter what community you're in, parents come out. Um, and so Dr. Fitzpatrick, your thoughts?
And attendance zones are, are, of course, you know, is a sensitive topic. Uh, you have community pride uh, within zones and uh, schools and neighborhood schools. And so that, that is definitely uh, something that um, you know, we take into consideration. Uh, but to answer your question about looking, uh, we currently uh, have um, software uh, that, that uh, new software we're being trained on where uh, we can actually look at the growth and could actually just do different projections on attended zones within that software. So um, you know, we, we are looking at that, we're looking at all type of options. Um, but again, uh, I think uh, when you talk about attendance zones, uh, parents love their schools. Uh, communities love their schools and so that is a sensitive topic.
Thank you, everyone, for all the um, input. Uh, I think it's good that, that we can just lay it all on the table and, and discuss it. And uh, feedback always helps and bouncing ideas off each other, I think is also beneficial. We're gonna move on to item five D now, uh, discussion about impact fees uh, for the school district.
I think everybody in the room has familiarization with the impact, but just wanted to give you a little bit of background is uh, back in twenty-one, uh, county council approved the new residential um, school impact fee um, for the Panhandle area of Lancaster County. Again, that, that school impact fee is only for the geographic area north of Highway five. And I want to once again publicly thank county council for the support uh, in that particular uh, request. Uh, we currently are uh, around nine thousand dollars for the single-family residential units and about uh, nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the multifamily residential unit. Uh, we are um, collecting those fees. Uh, I think to date, we have collected about nine hundred K. I'm looking at our CFO from the last report. Um, so it's coming in, uh, not a whole lot of money to build a new school, to build or even do expansions uh, with nine hundred K. But we're certainly thankful for what we are collecting. And we appreciate again the support of county council on passing that in twenty-one. So thank you all very much. Uh, next slide. So in the Tuesday's board meeting. Gosh, it's feeling like it's Wednesday again. Uh, and Tuesday, long night. In Tuesday's board meeting, uh, the board voted to commence a new study on uh, for impact fees, school impact fees. Again, this is just a study. Uh, and the reason we're doing that study is we wanna go back and see if the maximum amount that was in the former study is, is still current under market, under the current market conditions. Um, as many of you are aware, neighboring counties with impact fees are a lot higher than Lancaster County. So we just want to verify that the maximum amount that was approved in twenty-one is still valid. And then the second part we're look, want to look at is whether or not as we're beginning to see growth since twenty-one, moving south of Highway five, is there a need for us to look at potentially expanding that impact fee to cover the new schools that are gonna be needed in Lancaster County? Um, and we also see growth occurring in Kershaw. Uh, and again, this is based on the county's projections as well as our school projections. Uh, we are trying to get ahead of the growth in those areas. Uh, so again, the board approved for, to commence with a, a impact fee study uh, this year. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Uh, again, the rationale for, for having this study is we're seeing increased development beyond the Panhandle. Uh, as it increases, we know that these uh, new, new developments will bring new demands on our school facilities. And uh, we want to provide um, fact-based information uh, for both the school district and the county for consideration if we come to you asking for uh, uh, an expansion or review of the impact fee.
Uh, how much will that study cost? And the school district will pay for that study, correct?
That is correct. It's not a county council request.
Do you know how much that uh, study will cost?
Yes, we estimate that the study will be around seventy K, seventy to seventy-five K.
So the process would be, if they go for the study, they'll bring back the findings to you in approximately six months. But county council has to initiate a resolution to direct the planning commission to run an impact fee study. So county council will have input, uh, input on this and decision.
Uh, uh, and I think you, you mentioned whether it was a need south of five for impact fees. From talking to my constituents, no. Uh, you know, south of, of, uh, I mean, north of five is a different story. Uh, I can just about tell you, south of five, you know, no impact, it will, will not happen, south of five. Now, about uh, north of five, I don't know, that's a discussion that we all can have. But right now, not countywide, not in my area.
Yeah, uh, you know, you might not wanna hear what, what I gotta say, but I agree with, of Ms. McGriff. Uh, you, you've got to look at, uh, council approve the impact fees. Uh, they were, they exempted any development before twenty twenty-one. They have only taken in nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, does anybody know what, what the projections are on the developments? The vacant lots that are left? You know, before we, we've got to know, you know, how many, but it is, it's not gonna take in enough to significantly make a difference. Uh, the schools in my district, uh, in Ms. McGriff's, including McDonald Green, Brooklyn Springs, Clinton, uh, there's no way I'll support uh, of approving impact fees below number five. Not only because there, uh, you, you've got to look at the, the major growth is down at uh, Cataba Ridge and Edgewater. And unless uh, some, something can be changed where, where they can be charged impact fees, uh, I, I would not even consider it because there, there, there's gonna be up to fifteen thousand, probably thirteen thousand more houses down there in the next twenty to twenty-five years. Uh, the city of Lancaster, are they exempt from these fees? We can't, we, huh?
I don't think they're exempt from fees for the school district because they don't offer those services.
Okay, but uh, all right. It, it's just that uh, there's, there's not enough growth uh, gonna happen uh, outside of uh, Edgewater. Now, you, you're gonna have growth north of number of the city, there'll be several thousand houses up there. But the uh, the projections, I hope you have a better study, I'm looking at this now, is protected the school enrollment for Lancaster County in twenty-four, twenty-five. It'd be sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-five. And I looked online at a report from the state, there's actually fifteen thousand students, fifteen one seventy-five. Uh, you know, these are only studies and I am uh, I'm adding ten to fifteen thousand dollars will, will make uh, houses unaffordable in my part of the world.
Thank you, council members. Appreciate your input. The idea of this study is to point out exactly what you're sharing with us. If indeed there is no growth for that area or limited growth, then the study will come back and say, perhaps we don't need to do that.
The uh, council pretty much killed growth in Indian land after twenty twenty-one. Uh, I don't think there's been a new subdivision approved on a, on a rezoning in the last two to three years.
I, I much appreciate that bit of action by the council, however.
I, I'm not trying to be negative, but uh, I've been on here for twelve years and for years. Uh, some rezonings would come through and there was no communication between the school district and the council.
Appreciate that, but I have thousands of houses being built right now within five miles of my house.
Yeah.
That's in Indian land. So those houses are being built, even though we've shut down new ones.
Yeah.
That's fine. The houses are being built. They will have children. We have to deal with them, please.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but those, those houses already have impact fees. And you, you need to, you, you, you need to look at the uh, the uh, the, the, the MDR, which is the medium residential uh, classification. There are only like three partials up there, over twenty-five acres that uh, could be developed by right. And there's a smaller MDR and I think there's subdivision going through uh, currently. But uh, I, I, you know, I, I won't support them south of five. You know, if you wanna do the study, uh, it, it break it down into different regions of the county, I would support you doing that.
Okay, thank you for the feedback, a couple of comments. One is um, I think it's important to note that the impact fee that the council approved was in twenty twenty-one. And as I, I think uh, one of the council people acknowledged uh, earlier is that there were multiple contracts that had already been approved previously. So the impact fee did not get applied to many of those developments that were already approved. So they, they were exempted. They were not, they were not added or subject to the impact fee. So we may see developments occurring today where there was no impact fee applied. Number two, you're absolutely right. When you're looking at the state uh, um, website on the number of students in Lancaster County, that is based on ADM. That is the average daily count of students in our school. That's not the total count of students. So every forty-five days, we have to provide the, the student numbers that were in our school on the forty-fifth day. So if they're absent, they're not counted. Then we have to provide, I believe on the hundred and thirtieth day or hundred and thirty-fifth day, hun- hundred and thirty-fifth day, we provide another count to them. Uh, the, therein lies part of our formula problem because we could have fifteen thousand kids, which we have more of in our school, but if the ADM only shows fourteen thousand five hundred, that's the funding we get. We don't get funding for the whole fifteen thousand that's there. So five hundred kids are missed if they're not there on that forty-fifth day. So, so, so that's, so I, so it's important not only for council to understand that, but for our community to understand that. Uh, so that's why there's a finite bucket of money. And you hear teachers at times say that they're looking for additional support to buy classroom materials because the budget doesn't support it. So and, and I'm, and, and this is again, just information for folks to be aware of uh, so that you understand and as Councilman Harper tried to explain, there's, there's a lot more detail behind the numbers. So oftentimes, just don't take the numbers at face value. Um, please ask Dr. Fitzpatrick, any of the school board members or our CFO, she's available. Uh, questions regarding how our budget, how our revenue is developed and how the money is spent. And the other thing that I want folks to understand is, is that all seven of your, your school board members are good stewards of the tax spirit dollars. Uh, we have to approve a budget just like county council does every year. We have a finite bucket of money that we've got and eighty-five percent or eighty-seven percent of our budget is salaries. And of the eighty-seven percent of our budget that is salaries, a lot of that is coming from just state funding. We get a lot of questions now with how will the potential reorganization or elimination of the U.S. Department of Education will affect Lancaster County School District? It will have very minimum effect. Our federal dollars out of our hundred and thirty-three million, is that about right? Hundred and sixty something. No, 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 just our total budget. Hundred and eighty-two million, we get about nine million, about nine million in federal funds. So I just want folks to understand that the majority of that money is coming from state and local tax revenue. So again, and we appreciate all that county council does to help us collect taxes from commercial businesses. Thank you all so much. So we appreciate that.
I, I do, um, I do have a question. In terms of impact fees, can you talk just very high level on how impact fees would be used by the school district?
Yes. The impact fees in accordance with the twenty-one study that council approved can only be used for construction. only be used for construction of new school buildings or the purchase of land. That's it. Or or expansion, but it has to be a capital project. And those capital projects are e, the capital projects are limited to either elementary or middle school. So it has to be K through eight.
So I had a follow-up question. So I know I asked during one of the council meetings, have we gotten an answer as to whether the current impact fee can be amended, the ordinance, to remove the exist, the exemption for existing developments?
We, it's hard for the Attorney General to give an opinion on the local ordinance. And so it's untested, so County Council, under that purview, could try it and see if it gets tested. But the AG won't give an opinion on the local ordinance for the effectiveness. As the twenty-one ordinance was established, it used language that said if there's a development plan in place, then that development project's exempt. And so the development plan can be anything from having a platted development to, there's a whole list of things in there, which, so I don't have the exact number, but basically maybe a hundred developments were exempted in twenty-one. So you still see, these developments are still being built, and you see new houses coming on, and to the point that these new houses, and they still may be built in these developments in the next three to five years, none of them are paying the impact fees now. And so the question is, could we go back from that ordinance and change the effective criteria? And so that's what I know some council members have explored. And, oh, yeah, so back to the overall state statute on the impact fees is every, the study, every impact fee has to have a capital plan. And as you're talking to K through eight, either the elementary or the middle schools are the only things in that geographic area, but then also has the same parameters, has to be spent within three years of that plan starting. And so I don't know what we've said on the school side, but it could be if in twenty-twenty-seven a new school's planned, then those funds have to be expended. What we're finding on the county side, because we have impact fees for fire sheriff and Parks and Rec, or EMS sheriff, Parks and Rec, is that the revenue's so low, it's easy to spend twenty-one thousand dollars on the EMS fee towards an ambulance. So we're able to satisfy that requirement for the EMS side of things.
I don't think anyone sitting around this table is going to say that development is not going to continue in the county. We, the the gate is open and it's going to move to where it's easiest to develop. And since we have more or less shut down the Panhandle, it has moved south. And unfortunately, we have not learned the lessons from the past to to put on to the future. And that's one thing that we really need to address is that, you know, we need to learn from our past mistakes and try to cut them off in the future. So that's, I will just say that. Are, is there any other discussion that we need to have on this?
I I guess, I would, I I hear what we're, a few on council are saying, but when we're saying that be careful about the bond, don't do it too soon, don't do it too big, and then we're saying immediate no without consideration on impact fees in the rest of the county, I think we have to be careful about doing that as as Lancaster County, and is that the best thing for Lancaster County? I I don't think, so I I think we need, we we've asked the school and 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 some of the comments that we've had tonight is explore all options. And I think impact fees are not an end-all, be-all, perfect solution, but it is something that can, that can add in. And I just would urge us on council to be at least receptive to seeing what a study says and then taking that in as information and moving forward from there.
Yeah, now, I I think we all need to understand, and I think we do understand, that the impact fees are like a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. It's gonna help a little bit, but it's not going to do what needs to be done. It's just a small part of that process. And, you know, a lot of people will say, well, look at Fort Mill, they, how many schools did they build? Well, they built the schools because they bought the land with their impact fee money, but they have bought, passed multiple bond referents to build those schools. They did not build their schools with with impact fees. So again, you know, it it's going to help, but it's not going to help a lot, so. Absolutely.
With the additional impact fees, you got to have other funding sources to impact because it will never happen, just with impact fees.
Well, I want, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. I think this has been, for our citizens, this has been a great meeting, a lot of good discussion, and I look forward to future meetings and discussions as joint meetings with the school district and and Lancaster County Council.
Just before we adjourn, Councilman Carnes, Chairman Carnes, do we have that photo? There it is. If we can blow that up. I just wanted to take time. Thank you. Take time to say that past week, Lancaster County School District was visited by the state superintendent Ellen Weaver. She visited Lancaster High School, and she's taking a photo here with Lancaster High School Bruins basketball, boys' basketball team. Again, and it's a trophy. Of Dr. Fitzpatrick and his staff are doing. And having the state superintendent visit Lancaster County, as she's making her rounds around the district, again, is an indication of the work that our staff, our students, our administrators are doing, and our students, their achievements and their accomplishments. So again, hats off to Lancaster High School Bruins and Ellen Weaver for stopping by and to our teachers and administrators and staff who support the development of our kids. Back to you.
Andrew Jackson girls won a state championship, too.
Andrew Jackson, Indianland, middle school won a state championship. Who am I missing? The same thing at the Indianland High School, they're three-time champion consecutively. So, yes.
She looks in that picture like this trophy is heavy, hurry up, take the picture. Yes, we will have, we will be scheduling another meeting. The next one will be at school district in about six months, following the impact fee study, coming back and having discussions on that. Again, thank everyone for being here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, have a motion to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.